Okay.
Good evening. This is the Planning Board of the City of Springfield. I'm calling this meeting to order. Phil, would you give us roll call?
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, for four years, that sixteen.
Cunningham? Marty, can you? I don't hear you, Marty. I see you, but.
You're muted, Marty.
Marty, if your computer audio isn't working, you can dial in as well, but I don't, I don't hear you on your computer, but I, I can see you. Oh, I don't know if that was you, but.
Let me try it again.
No, I got you. I got you now. Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Minio?
Here.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Here.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Here.
Ms. McQuade? Absent. And Ms. Choi?
Here.
So we do have a quorum. Just, just for the sake of the new, that we have four new, hold on one sec. Tim, hold on one sec. We, we just, for the sake of the four new applicants, I just wanted to, to clarify that due to the Zoom requirements, the items, the new items that are to be heard tonight will only be heard tonight. That's, that's to allow, at the end of this meeting, those items will be continued. This will allow people the opportunity to view the meeting and provide comments. And at the next regularly scheduled hearing, which is October 7th, the vote to, to approve or not approve will happen at that date. So I just wanted to make that clear for the, for the applicants who are new here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Our first item of business is minutes, need to accept minutes from July 15th. Do I have a motion?
I, motion to approve.
Second. Okay. I, we, I guess we're going to need a roll call vote, so I'm just gonna go by who I see on screen, so no. Leo?
Yes.
Okay. Luca?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
And I say yes. Motion is passed. The next order of business, Phil?
Hold on, okay.
Seventy-eight Island Pond Road.
Yeah, the under, under continued public hearings, liquor license, beer and wine package store news, seventy-eight Island Pond Road. Petitioner Rajee Corp doing business as Murphy's Pop Shop. I believe the, the attorney for the applicant is here.
I am, yes.
They, I guess I would defer to you. We, there was, they were originally asking for a postponement. I'm not sure if they, Catherine, have you decided whether you're?
I, I spoke to my clients and I spoke to the architect that they hired, Greg Neffinger today. He's trying to get a structural engineer out there. With COVID, it's been a little difficult. I also spoke with them about any issues they're having with cleaning up. It was brought to our attention that there was some debris there this morning. Apparently, the garbage truck missed the mark and spilled some garbage there. And they've been trying very hard to keep the property as clean as possible lately. After speaking with Mr. Neffinger, they're trying to figure out exactly what's possible. He needs to get some more engineers out there and taking a little bit more time than, than we had hoped. And if possible, we would like a continuance if, if that's possible.
Okay. Thank you. Does, do any of the council member, Planning Board members, excuse me, have any questions or concerns?
I'm happy to see them taking it seriously, so I have no concerns with continuance.
I would just like to say, you know, I drive by that parcel daily and it's been about a month now since they've cut their lawn. I'm not sure if this will work here.
I, I did speak to them about that. They're, they need to be more careful with.
I don't know if you guys can see this. I'm trying to share it here.
I, I can see it.
I can see it.
So this is, I walked my dog down there today and, I mean, this is the, the status of what the parcels looked like for the last month. You know, I think we've given them pretty, plenty of notice that, you know, one of the parts of having a special permit like this is to keep the parcel clean and well-kept. And I don't think that they've really been doing a good job without even having the permit in their hands. And I can only imagine, you know, kind of what kind of disarray is, is gonna happen over there whence they're selling beer and wine and, and all sorts of things, so. Between that and the residential, single-family use across the street and the concern from the East Forest Park Civic Association, I would recommend that we get this to a vote at our next session.
Luca, could you just stop your, your screen sharing?
Yeah.
I mean, I just wanted to kind of chime in. I, you know, I, I visited the site as well today. I mean, I, I have to say, I, I'm not sure a trash truck, because they missed the mark, is the reason that the tree belt is, is overgrown and full of trash. So I, I, I'm, I, I am concerned, as I indicated to the Kathleen this afternoon, that the, that the, the owner of the property was, you know, informed of the need to take care of this over a month ago. And I continually drive by this, this lot as well. And, you know, he may have picked up the trash once, but that's not a job you do once. And, and he certainly has not done anything to address the overgrown vegetation. So, and, you know, the idea that, that a, that a trash truck is the reason for this, I, I, I don't necessarily buy. So, I mean, if the board wishes to continue, that's fine, but I, I'm getting, you know, I'm kind of at my wit's end as to why the, the owner of the property cannot maintain it to the standards of the, that they should be.
I mean, if the board is not inclined to postpone it, you know, they, they are taking this very seriously and they don't want to be, you know, they don't want to move forward if they're gonna be denied. They want to do everything that the board wants. And they would, if you, if you're not interested in continuing it, they want your approval, they want to move forward. But they would like to withdraw the application without prejudice if, if the board isn't, isn't able to, to approve this.
Well, I have to agree with Luca. They've been given plenty of time to fix the property up. There is a lot of concern from the neighborhood. There is no neighborhood support, so. I think you might, go ahead, Leo.
I, I just think, I mean, I've been in there a number of times, and I just think it's a lack of staff. They have one person in that building every time I've been in there working. And then if you add beer and wine for that person to be, to watch over with the beer and wine, handle all of the lottery tickets to Keno and everything else, be the security, watch outside, clean up outside. They're trying to get away with doing all of that with, it looks like, one staff person. And that's, it, I don't, I don't see how that's gonna work.
So I, from what I'm gleaning, they have stuff to work on. Would it be possible for us to withdraw our application without prejudice and, you know, let them work on this, continue working with their architect, work with their staff, make sure before they apply again, everything is, is, is the way it should be?
That probably is a, a better idea than the, the board's voting and voting it down. If that's what the board chooses, and then you can't come back for another two years. Am I correct, Phil?
No, that's, well, that's not the case for, for a license.
Well.
I, I agree with you, Gloria. Luca, thank you so much for the picture. I haven't been by it recently, but that overgrowth isn't, that's not like a week's worth. It's, they're just not taking care of it. And they have been told multiple times, so it's a very disappointment.
So I guess if it's, if it's the board's purview to allow the, withdraw the application, then I, then.
Without, without prejudice, please. I mean, in a few months, they'd like to, you know, address all of your concerns and show that they've been, you know, maintaining it as they should be.
I just, I would just make a motion as such, if that's the, if that's the will of the board.
Okay, then we need a motion to that effect. Does anyone want to make that?
What do we make a motion on if they're just withdrawing? Is it our approval of their withdrawal?
Technically, yeah, I mean, technically, you need to accept their withdrawal because the application is be filed. That's my understanding. So I would just make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice and, and we can take a vote.
I move to accept it, the withdrawal without prejudice. Is there a second? Marty, did you second it?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, we could do a, a roll call vote, Phil.
Yeah, on the motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade, absent. Ms. Choi? I think you were.
Yes.
Saying, oh, okay.
I, I. Given that.
I would technically abstain just because you weren't at the previous hearing for this one.
I agree.
Okay. All right, motion's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Catherine.
All right, you got that? At this time. I'll let you know when they come back. Right. All right, see you, Tim. All right, that was Councilor Helen on the phone. Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
Liquor license, 445, 447 Sumner Avenue.
Yeah, under public hearings, a new package store liquor license, a transfer. Location, 445, 447 Sumner Ave. Petitioner, Parkside Discount Liquors, Inc.
Okay, we have two letters to that. Am I correct?
Correct. I guess I was gonna see if there was a petitioner here to make the presentation, then we could, we could read the.
Yeah, I am here. Can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
We need your name and address, please.
I'm Hashmukh Gogri, sixty-one Appaloosa Lane, West Springfield, Mass. Owner of Parkside Discount Liquor, the proposed location. And we are looking to relocate the license from, currently from Cottage Street to come to Sumner Avenue. And we are looking to make a nice, beautiful, clean, you know, woman-friendly location on Sumner Avenue.
Would it be possible that we can see who we're talking to? Is that possible?
Yes. One second, let me see. Okay, can you see me now?
Yes, just.
Thank you. Okay, now better, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. I'm still speaking on my iPhone. Is that okay? Continue to speak in my iPhone?
Yes, that's fine. I hear you clearly.
Thank you. We own, you know, another store in West Springfield, right across the river, and we did a very good job there. We moved a small license from a small location into a bigger location in a plaza, right near Biggie. And we are into about second year for that, and we have done a very nice job.
Okay. Phil, could you read the two letters?
Uh, yes. We, we received a letter from Adam Butter. I'll read it. It's a, Joanne Pacula, Dear Gloria Di Filippo, My name is Joanne Pacula. I am writing to you today to express my concerns of a liquor license transfer to 445, 447 Sumner Avenue. The planning board hearing is scheduled for September sixteenth and October seventh. I live at seventeen Beaumont Street, which is, which is in close proximity to the proposed site of the new liquor store. As a proponent of bringing new business to the X area of Springfield, I do not feel that this is the right business for this location. First, Forest Park Package Store is located a few blocks away at 594 Sumner Avenue. Do we really need more liquor stores in such close proximity? Keep in mind that there are several other liquor stores less than five minutes away, including Frank's, Food Zone, Eddie's, Allen Package Store, Dickinson Deli, and South End Package Store. My second concern is that having a discount liquor store at 445, 447 Sumner Avenue will contribute to an ongoing problem in our neighborhood. Patrons of the Taco Bell tend to order, drive-through meals, and drive around the corner to Beaumont Street and eat their meals on our street, discarding the garbage trash in the streets. I did not oppose the Taco Bell petition to open at this location. However, had I known the problem that had arose, I would have. I don't want to see patrons buying their liquor at 445, 447 Sumner Ave, then going across the street to Taco Bell for a drive-through meal, then driving around the corner to eat, drink, and discard more trash on our street. I strongly hope you will consider my objection to the petition and recommend denial of this application. Sincerely, Joanne Pacula, seventeen Beaumont Street. We also received a correspondence from the Forest Park Civic Association. The letter reads, "The Forest Park Civic Association met on Tuesday, September eight, 2020 regarding the package store liquor proposal to open a liquor store at 445, 447 Sumner Ave. The Forest Park Civic Association feel that at this time, the Forest Park neighborhood is adequately served and that a new liquor store will oversaturate the neighborhood. Any questions? Please feel to contact me at two nine seven eight six one four. Thank you, Victor Davia, President, Forest Park Civic Association."
Okay, thank you, Phil. Do any of the board members have questions or concerns?
Yeah, I have a, a quick question. Did the proponent go to the Forest Park meeting? Or was that, or did they just meet separately on the issue?
No, we were there. We had a Zoom meeting like this.
Okay.
I was there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get the address of your other store in West Springfield?
It is eleven fifty Union Street Extension, sorry, Union Street Extension, right in that Pise Right Plaza.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you tell me, I'm, where is the parking for the, the business? It's, it's not on Sumner Avenue, is it?
No, it is on the side of the building. There is plenty of parking, actually more than ten spaces, I would say, and jointly there, and then the back of the building also. And we are looking to leave the entrance on the Sumner Avenue as is and make a new entrance into the parking lot, so that, you know, the customers can park their car in front and come through that new entrance that we are proposing.
So you've changed your original plans, because you had originally said you wanted to close off the Sumner?
Yeah, we want.
Entrance, but you're gonna leave it open?
Yeah. Since we learned that it is an overlay district and we are not allowed to make any changes to that entrance, we fully agree to that. And we want to make a new entrance in the parking lot, which make it a little more convenient for our patrons, you know, to park their car and walk into the store.
Is there an entrance in the back to the parking lot, or you're just gonna?
There is a bank entrance in the back also. There is an entrance in the back.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we are, we are looking to keep that one, because, you know, that can be our delivery entrance for our deliveries and whatnot.
So you have three entrances?
Yeah.
Did Forest Park actually give you any thoughts into why they weren't supporting it, other than feeling it saturated?
No, they did not. And I answered all that question. And I, I, I want to, you know, make a comment about their argument about saturation. Commonwealth of Massachusetts is going to allow sales of beer and wine pretty much everywhere, into every grocery store, every gas station, and whatnot. And so it is the nature of the business that beer and wine and everything will be sold in gas stations and grocery stores anyway. So oversaturation cannot be, you know, well, you know, like a reason for not allowing us to go into the Forest Park neighborhood. We are going to, looking to cater to the people who are going to make a right turn on Route eighty-three, which is Islam made of customers, you know, we are, we are, they're right there before that turn. And we want to attract those customers and cater to them. And, you know, we are in a different kind of traffic pattern, kind of catering to those customers. That's our goal.
One last question. You're relocating. Is the other store still open, or have you closed it?
It is not yet closed. It's subject to the transfer of license, you know. We are going to do that, the older store doesn't have lease and doesn't have enough space and doesn't have neighborhood to make the numbers work. So we are looking for a good location in this, is a position for us.
So that's why you're looking to move it, okay.
How many package stores do you own?
We own this one and another one in West Springfield. And I will have a beer wine license on Boston Road in Springfield.
And how long have you owned the Cottage Street?
No, I do not own it currently. I'm buying that license from someone.
Oh, okay. So you're, okay. You have a beer and wine license on Boston Road. What's the store?
That's a, it's a gas station, sit-go. It burned down last year in June. And we are looking to rebuild and make a nice, beautiful, big, good-sized store. So we got an approval literally day before yesterday for that addition. So we are in the process of making that store bigger and nicer and, yes.
All right, are there any other concerns?
I'm sure some of the concerns of the Civic Association had involved the traffic, especially between four and six o'clock, trying to get onto Sumner Avenue's gotta be a nightmare. Just going, going through the X at that time is, is, is quite an experience. And also, you know, are the people gonna be trained? Is there any kind of security?
Yeah. We are all TIP certified, if you are aware of TIP certification.
And, and you'll have cameras in the parking lot? Make sure?
Yeah, we will have cameras outside and inside and in the back of the building everywhere to make sure everything is secure, safe, and, you know, and we will have full, we will give full access to the local police department if we have to, to, you know, deter any potential crime or potential bad activities. That's our goal. We want to keep it clean, neat, and organized, and we want to fully abide by the laws. And we want to do a good job, not something that, you know, we, we will be called back. That's our goal.
Gloria, do you want to do your question on singles?
That's a good one.
That's one you always bring up.
How, are you selling singles or six-packs, or how are you doing?
We usually sell everything, you know, whatever is allowed by the law of Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We fully respect it. And if they change the law to, for everyone, we will definitely honor that law and we will stop selling anything that is not allowed by the law. But, you know, it's a big investment and big risk that we are taking. And, you know, it's our goal to succeed and pay taxes and keep the neighborhood clean. We need the revenue from, you know, everywhere possible. So we will offer all the services and products allowed by Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay. Um, I, I have to admit, I'm a little concerned, at least from what I hear from you, that you will be selling singles? Will you be selling nips?
Yeah, I mean, whatever is allowed by Commonwealth of A, B, C, C, you know. We are, I mean, I, I fully recognize your concern. And I want to, you know, stress that we will do our best job in a full, possible way to deter any bad activity and, especially the litter and, you know, trash. We will try to control around our surrounding and we, you know, I think we will hope everybody else who, we will post necessary signage and leave trash barrel outside. So people who are coming in and out, want to get rid of their trash in proper way, we will provide that services.
That's all well and good, but what about the fact that people could be pulling up to the store, grabbing one bottle, grabbing a nip? You have no control over that. That's a concern.
I understand, and, you know, we will do our best to educate. I think that's what is expected from all the package store, that to stop any illegal activity. And we will, you know, enforce that, you know, not let them consume alcohol in the parking lot. We will, beyond that, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
How much of your business is, is from nips and sale of single bottles?
Maybe less than five percent. Less than five percent.
Not willing to say that you would not sell singles or nips, when you're, it's less than five percent?
Every, you know, believe us, it's been harder for all the businesses. I'm not speaking for rest of the business owners, but it has been a challenge to, to own a business and operate with so many regulations over menthol cigarettes, banning of menthol cigars and whatnot. So it is overly increasing burden for us to get revenues from wherever possible to come up with, you know, to, to stay positive on our cash flow and pay our employees and still make money. So unfortunately, you know, I, I, I will have to admit, we have to stay with whatever is best way to, you know, because government has banned sales of menthol products. And that was supposed to be our biggest revenue generator for us, even though it is a bad thing. But it was generating revenue and that's been banned. So it has cut down a lot of our sales. So that's why we have to get our sales from, you know, every legal avenue possible.
Okay. I'm not sure I totally agree with all of that, but that, that's okay.
I just wish, I just wish that the Civic Association was a little bit more specific on, on the concerns that they have. Because they live right there, they would know best. And just that general letter saying they oppose it, you know, doesn't really say too much. Is it because of what? Because of traffic? Because of safety, security? They don't want kids hanging around in the parking lot?
No, no, no. They were fully convinced about safety, security, and I answered my, their questions to the best possible way.
Then what was their objection? Why, then why did they vote no?
Because obviously, you know, the other liquor store, the Forest Park Liquor Store has been there for a long time and they possibly like him. I, I have no idea. I'm an immigrant and I want to try new things and, you know, I want to, it's a nature of, you know, that's how we grow and we, you know, we, we, we are here to grow our business and, you know, offer the best to the community. We are, you know, it's legal license to go within the city. And we, we found this area to be the best for our youth. And we are here to, you know, get, you know, positive feedback from you. We are not here to take away anybody else's business, you know. We, on Boston Road, my gas station with beer and wine will be right across from a full liquor store, right across. Not even one, two blocks, three blocks away like they are mentioning. I'm within thirty feet from the other store. And we are, we will have our own customers and they have their own. Nobody's taking nobody's customers. So question of saturation doesn't arise, you know.
I, I think that's the main concern, Leo, was the saturation and how close the Forest Park Liquor Store is. Forest Park Liquor Store is. So that was why I was asking too, because usually they outline what, why they're not, you know, why they're not supporting something, and it was sort of general.
Well, let me say, right now, we are obviously going to continue this hearing because we are not going to vote on it tonight. And hopefully, we can reach out to the Forest Park Civic Association and ask them for a little bit more detail to be, to have it available to us at our next meeting.
Sure. And I, I also want to stress that once the law passes to have more beer and wine license available to all the gas station owners and grocery store owner, are they going to stop each, each and every one of them? Like I have at Sumner Avenue, Cumberland Farm, a gas station existing without beer and wine, but they are the biggest proponent of this law to get beer and wine license in lieu of loss of sales for, you know, menthol cigarettes and whatnot. And if they get that beer and wine license, are they going to stop that? I'm, I'm not supposed to stop. If I open my liquor store, and if they open beer-wine store right across the street, I, I will not be able to stop it. So the point of saturation, I don't know how and what to answer with that.
Peter, do you know anything about this?
Peter is muted so far. Oh, we still cannot hear you. Mr. Peter.
What's the question, Ross Murray?
The question is, is there a new proposed law to change, to change the law so that gas stations and, and grocery stores can have liquor licenses?
I, I do believe that they are adding the number of package stores or liquor stores that a licensee can have slowly in, in steps. But, you know, they, that, this is an all-alcohol license and not a beer and wine license, so you're comparing apples and oranges.
No, it's a, it's a licensee, not businesses. So in other words, if I decide I want to open up a, a package store, and then I can open up two, three, four, five package stores if I have the ability?
Right. And that was limited before. I think it was limited to three, and now it may be up to five. And then as the years go on, they have, you can have, you know, seven or 10. So, so a chain like Beer, like Big Y could have one in every store.
Okay. Thank you. So it really is, then, it's the number of liquor licenses a owner can have?
Right.
Okay. That's a little bit different than how I was understanding it. All right. Are there any other questions or concerns from the board, from the planning board?
All right. I also just wanted to recognize Jennifer McQuaid has joined.
Thank you, Phil.
Sorry, I was confused. I thought we were back to the regular time of six. I totally apologize.
No problem. All right. If there are no other questions or concerns, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, if you'll do roll call.
Voting in favor to continue, item one, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Motion will be continued to October 7th.
October 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item under public hearing, zone change number 3217, address 1245 Liberty Street, 1365 Liberty Street, 1377 Liberty Street.
We're not happy.
St. James Avenue, 1284, 1290 St. James Avenue, 1276 St. James Avenue, and Westside, 1252 St. James Avenue. Proposed zone change from industrial A to business A, Springfield Planning Board. I'm Phil Dromey, Deputy Director of the Office of Planning. The proposed zone change is to rezone a number of properties on Liberty Street as well as bordering on St. James Avenue. It's basically the property that's encompassed now by the Springfield Plaza. As the board is aware, there, there's kind of some flux in the ownership of this property. Obviously, with COVID, there's a number of economic impacts to this property, and there, and there's, there's talk that the property may revert back to the bank. In reviewing the zoning for that property, it was identified that a large section of the property is currently zoned industrial A. I'm just going to bring up my map here to, it's easier to look at the map. Just let me know if you can see that. Can everyone see that?
It's still coming. Yes, we have it.
Okay. So as you can see, the, the brown is business A, and the blue is, is all industrial A. As I indicated in my report to the board, the industrial A portion of the property predates the Plaza. It's, it was there when, when this area of Springfield was more industrial use, is also the location of the former municipal airport. So when the Plaza was changed, the zoning just remained as industrial A. All the current uses within the Plaza are all uses that are allowed under business A. So a zone change would not impact any of the existing legally permitted businesses. It would simply just limit more intense uses that industrial A allows. We've, we've come across that at the Eastfield Mall. Again, because of the lack of tenants at these larger malls, they're looking for other uses. And we received a number of, of ideas at that mall, at, you know, a large used car lot, truck tractor schools, truck tractor parking. So, so currently now, under industrial A, a number of those uses would be allowed by right versus in business A, which, again, is more appropriate for this area. As you can see, it's surrounded by a number of residents, including a, you know, a large residential development over here on Naismith Street that, that just recently got committed, not committed, needed within the last couple of years. So, again, rezoning the property to business A does not affect any of the existing businesses, and it, and it just helps to protect the neighborhood from, from any potential negative uses that could potentially occur under that current.
Phil, does the current owners have any say in this?
I mean, they certainly could, they, they are notified. They certainly could object. But, you know, under state law, there, there's basically three ways to change zoning. You can, Springfield City Council has the ability to petition for a zone change. The Springfield Planning Board has the, has the, has the ability to petition, and then 10 registered voters, and then obviously the owner. So, again, I, the owners were notified. I have not had any contact. Again, I, you know, to me, the, the, the biggest point is, is, a lot of times when you're rezoning property, it tends to limit the ultimate uses that can occur on the particular site, going from, you know, we've done a number of large neighborhood zone changes that have gone from Residence B, which is two-family, to Residence A, which only allows single-family. You have a number of people that have lots that want to continue to build two families that can no longer do that once it's rezoned. So, but this particular rezone really doesn't have an impact to the owner, unless, of course, they were planning to do something that would be allowed under industrial A. But, but we are not aware of any of those plans, and currently, as I indicated, all the uses that are there are all currently uses allowed under business A.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anybody who has any questions or concerns? Okay. I do know, Phil, that there's been a lot of, on Next Door Neighbor comments about the condition of the Plaza, a lot of debris and everything.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I am aware of that. I know the Neighborhood Council has indicated they're, they're not happy with the overall condition. Again, I, you know, I, I'm not sure if that relates to the kind of flux in the, in the ownership, but, you know, I know Code's been trying to go out there to have them clean that up. Hopefully, we can address that, but.
A lot of trash and stuff blowing around and debris, and yeah. Okay. Well, I will accept a motion if no one has any other comments or concerns to continue this hearing. I move to continue this hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Bill, if you will do roll call, please.
Vote to continue zone change 321, actually, I think it should be 3216, not 3217. Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
Ms. McQuaid?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Motion approved to continue.
Thank you.
Next item under public hearings, site plan review, address 225 Corando Drive, for the renovation of an existing building for a proposed charter school, petitioner Greenfield Development LLC.
Is there someone here to speak on this petition?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the planning board, Mr. Dromey, my name is Michael McDonald. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Greenfield Development. With me on the line is Mr. Joseph Maroy, who is the president of Greenfield Development and its sole owner. Also on the line with us is John Furman of VHB, the project's traffic consultant. Let me first explain Greenfield's role here. Greenfield is the, is a signatory to a purchase and sales agreement with the owner. This property has been vacant since fall of 2017. It has become a signatory to that purchase and sales agreement for the purpose of responding to a request for proposal put out by Veritas Preparatory School. Veritas operates a, a primary-level school at 370 Pine Street. They are proposing to build a secondary or high-school-level school somewhere in the city of Pittsfield. They sought request for proposal responses. Greenfield was one of two, as we understand it, respondents. Veritas has not as yet, but expects in the next, expect the next week or so to make a formal decision as to which proponent and which property it is selecting to move forward with. We are hopeful that we will be the selected developer of that project. As I said, the last use of this property, it's a vacant, vacant industrial property previously used for manufacturing purposes. It is at the end of the cul-de-sac on Corando Drive. In the past, it had, based upon my discussion with Mr. Martinelli, Gary Martinelli, who was one of the owners, at times, they had as many as 200 to 300 employees, and also at times, they had three full shifts. So the conversion of this building to a high-school-level charter school, which at its inception is anticipated to have 100 students, 16 staff, and ultimately, over a period of years, they hope as many as 350 students and 54 staff. So even at the upper levels, the proposed traffic burden induced by this proposal is far less than what the property has seen in the past. And as I've said, the property has remained vacant for industrial purposes since the fall of 2017. Turning to the staff analysis on the project, the staff analysis appropriately mentions Chapter 40A, Section 3, the zoning-enabling statute, which reads in relevant part, "That no zoning ordinance shall regulate or restrict the use of land or structures for religious or educational purposes." And then it goes on to say, "Provided, however, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures." We're not proposing to amend any of that. "Determining yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements." So again, the only thing among those listed items that are expressly subject to regulation, the only thing that is impacted by this proposal is location and number of parking spaces, which we will address. The staff analysis ultimately concludes that the proposal meets all underlying zoning requirements, and as such, the staff is recommending that the proposed development be approved. The staff analysis does say, make a comment about the wisdom or not of having a charter school located in an industrial zone. But they also say that 40A, Section 3, as I just read, restricts the ability of a community to, to address that. And I would submit to the board that the fact that this is at the end of a cul-de-sac means that what you would perceive as concerns in terms of conflict of student traffic to industrial traffic is minimized. I would also like to point out, just in the staff analysis, where you've got a picture of the proposed queuing for buses and cars, that there is, there are two separate lanes as proposed. You would come in off of the cul-de-sac, take a left, so that there is not queuing occurring in the cul-de-sac or on Corando itself. And those would come in in two lanes. So the inner lane is cars, the parents should be dropping children off, and the outside is buses for those children taking buses to school. If you turn to the, next to last page, there's a site plan of the interior renovation of the first floor of the building to convert it to high-school use. And I also just wanted to point out, if you look at the last page where it says proposed location, it properly shows that there is a second building, I think that's 211 Corando, which is currently part of the same parcel that is being subdivided. This is a land court piece of property, registered land, and Mr. Martinelli is taking the steps necessary to separate that building on the right from the building that is the subject of this application. Then to address, and I'll let Mr. Furman address it in more detail, the letter of September 11 from the DPW. They cite that they want clear validation that vehicles will not queue in the public way. As I've said, from the site plan, the intention of having the cars come in, cars and buses, and turning left is to assure that there is not queuing in Corando Drive. There's a statement about there'll be approximately 105 student drop-offs. I'm confused by that. I'm not sure if Mr. Furman has any more insight. What, what they've said is 100 students, since there are school buses and some parents dropping by cars, it should be far less than 105 student drop-offs. It then states that the site plan, proposed drop-off pattern is unconventional. And I think what they mean by that, and hopefully, the, the board was given a separate sort of clarifying plan that I provided to Mr. Dromey yesterday, I think what they're referring to is unconventional, is rather than the buses coming into the property and ending up at the drop-off curb with the bus door facing the curb, the bus door is facing away from the curb. And if you look at, hopefully, you all have this other plan, what it shows is a barrier wall or divider concrete to separate students being dropped off from any car traffic circulating in the car lane, and hashed-out crosswalks to allow them safely behind that barrier to exit the bus and get onto the sidewalk. The last item mentioned in the, in the DPW letter is the plan does not address conformance to handicap accessibility guidelines. Again, I'll let Mr. Furman speak to that more precisely. But there are, as you can see from the site plan, provision for handicapped parking at the, the crosswalk and at the end of the building, so that people exiting that have accessibility needs can get at the end of the building immediately onto the sidewalk safely. And at the crosswalk that crosses the two lanes of traffic, they can get out, get into a marked crosswalk, and get safely to the sidewalk for access to the school. The school. The school was on one level, so there should be no accessibility issues associated with the access into the building. John, do you have anything to add relative to the DPW concerns? John Furman? I saw that he was on.
Mr. Furman, you need to unmute yourself.
I see him muted.
Phil, do you have that other plan?
Yeah, I can bring that up. Here's the...
Yeah, so here we go. So the picture to the left, as I was describing, you've got, let me deal with the buses first. So the bus comes around. It parks behind the concrete barrier. And if you look at, it doesn't show well. Yeah, it shows in the lower right screen. So that students get off behind that barrier. So if it happened that a car coming around the car queuing lane somehow got out of control or curved wide, the student is behind a concrete barrier as they get off the bus and get safely onto the sidewalk. Then with regard to the handicap accessibility, you'll see right next to where the cursor just was, right there, is our two of the handicaps, three of the handicap spaces, excuse me, allowing access to that marked crosswalk. And then not showing on this plan, but showing on the original site plan that accompanies the staff analysis, you will see at the end of the building, handicap accessible parking spaces that open directly onto the long sidewalk that runs the full length of the front of the building.
So the students, once they get off of the bus, they would have to then walk in front of the bus to get to the school?
Correct. Yes.
I don't know about that. Makes me a little nervous.
Two things that I would say, I don't know the answer to this, but it is my belief that when the door is open, that the bus is inoperable, if you will. And secondly, these are high school students, not kindergarteners or first graders. It is not, as I said, I think that what they're referring to in terms of unconventional is specifically that fact. But the primary concern that they had was that no queuing occur in Corando itself. And the only way to affect that is to have the queuing take place on the property, which necessarily means you go in the opposite direction.
Will there be someone from the school to monitor that? Because they're teenagers. They could be horsing around and...
Yeah, I will let Mr. Maroy direct, answer that question since he's been in direct contact with the school.
I have a question. Is that the same way they're going to leave at the end of the day? Because letting kids off a bus one by one is way more manageable than the end of the day when 100, 100, or at some point, 300 students try to get on some six or seven buses.
Right, well...
Which crowd of kids walking out of school at the same time.
Yeah, I understand. There are staff that, you know, are with the kids as that process takes place.
They were only letting off one bus at a time?
Yes.
I would be more concerned with the end of the day than I think...
I know what you mean.
As somebody who's worked in a high school with many kids on a bus, it's much more manageable getting them off the bus than it is getting them on the bus. Because they're all coming out at one time. So unless you're having a staggered release at the end of the day, and people are being escorted from one class onto the, I mean, they're all going to be on different buses.
So I can see them all running to different buses.
It's just, it's a safety concern, the way this is going. Because you're also going to have parents there picking up kids and kids driving. It's high school. They may have their own vehicle. So you're...
If I can offer a suggestion, and that is that it could be made a condition of the site plan approval. There are attached to the staff analysis several suggestions for conditions. It could be made a condition of that approval that teachers be present, number one. Number two, it may be appropriate to allow students to be released from the building only when their bus is ready to be loaded, those kinds of things. I hear the concern.
I could say something here. This is Joe Maroy, the proponent of the project. It's been our experience with the charter school currently on 470 Pine Street that the Veritas School does a remarkable job. They follow en masse every twice a day with their staff. They all have different titles and they're, not only do they monitor the onboarding and offloading of all the students, but they also check with the drivers of the cars and the kids they're getting in, so somebody doesn't just pick up a kid and doesn't belong to them. It's just a remarkable job that they do. There's maybe 10 or 12 of them in the morning and in the afternoon, and it's quite impressive. They all follow, whether it's raining or not, and they're there. I think it's a great idea what they're doing. I don't expect anything less on this project.
Unfortunately, I live a block from that school. And while they are out there and stuff, I got to tell you, it's chaos between the parents picking them up and they're lined up and the street is just so loaded. You know...
I have to agree. I agree with you there because of the fact that that area doesn't lend itself to a lot of...
It doesn't at all. No.
It's so challenging, and I don't know what the answer is other than attempting to acquire more property, which they have done. But certainly, it is to the fault of their efforts to monitor the safety, and I think they've got a pretty good record in that regard. But I'll admit that it is frustrating when you're trying to drive through there and you've got all traffic to pick up students. We're hopefully not going to have that here. In fact, I think this is a, this situation lends itself to a lot more comfortable space for what we're trying to accomplish.
And to that point, I mean, the queuing for parent pickup on Pine Street is actually in the street and on the other side of parked cars. Here, you've got adequate facility and space onsite for orderly queuing of those cars in the parent pickup lane.
I mean, they're good neighbors as far as the neighborhood and the property and stuff. There's no complaints except for the pickup and the drop-off, you know, because it's just not a, there's just not the location there for all this extra traffic and stopping and buses and all. You know, so it's just the location.
Well, you're absolutely correct with that, and they're aware of it. They've made every effort to minimize the discomfort. But like we say, they physically just don't have space.
Hey, Phil, I'm sorry. This is John Furman. I had some computer issues. I couldn't get unmuted. I have a site plan loaded up. If I could share the screen, that might answer some questions, but it's up to you guys.
We just, is it the one that was sent yesterday?
Yeah, I think it was.
We did see it, Mr. Furman.
Okay.
We did see it. There's something that I have to clarify. You're recommending, you're asking for this site plan approval, but you haven't been selected as the developer for the property.
Yeah. That's correct. And let me address that the time constraints were under. So we attempted with the current owners, sellers, to get ourselves a 120-day due diligence period, which would have put us out into, let's see, into November, which would have given us time to first get chosen and then go through this process. They were unwilling to do that, so we've got a 90-day due diligence period that magically happens to end on October 7th, the date of your decision meeting. I'm confident I can get a day's extension on that. And we're simultaneously required by the school to respond to their RFP. So unfortunately, to your point, we've had to a little bit put the cart before the horse and get the application in to satisfy the time constraints of our purchase and sales agreement and run the clock simultaneously with the school's diligence process in selecting a successful proponent.
Okay, so then, if, I wish you all the positive luck in the universe, but...
By next meeting, we will know whether we are selected or not. So I expect that if we are not, which we'll be tremendously disappointed in, obviously, I'd expect that we would withdraw the application for site plan approval. If you see us at the next meeting, it means we were selected and ready to move forward.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns from the board? If not, I will accept a motion to...
Sorry, I had to unmute. I would just like to know a little bit more about, if you're selected, I would just like to know a little bit more if they could present it on the the parking with the school buses and letting off students and all, if you have any more information at that time.
If we will have any more information about their procedure for the next meeting, we can certainly get that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Somebody would make a motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Okay. Luca, will you second?
Second.
Thank you. Phil, if you would do roll call.
On the motion to continue site plan review for 225 Corando Drive, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Just once, just on, you guys are all set. This is, I forgot on the previous item. I just want to let you know that we did receive two letters of support for the zone change. I forgot to read those, so if I could do that just quickly to get them on the record.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One letter was from the Hungry Hill Civic Association. It states, "The Hungry Hill Neighborhood Council has agreed to support the zone change for the industrial A-zoned parcels to business A at the Springfield Plaza. The council understands the zone change will not affect the retail offices spaces that are presently in operation. In addition, the zone change will protect the abutters in adjoining neighborhood as well as more intense and potential obtrusive uses." Pay attention to this matter. Kathy Moss. The second letter I got was from the East Springfield Neighborhood Council.
Figure out how to get out of this thing.
I'm going to unmute you all. Again, the second letter was from the East Springfield Neighborhood Council, and it states, "The East Springfield Neighborhood Council has voted to support the zone change for the Springfield Plaza, which will change the zoning from industrial A to business A. We have carefully reviewed the proposal and have determined that this change is appropriate. We understand that this change will not impact the current uses, which include retail and office spaces on the site. In addition, the zone change will protect the abutters in the adjoining neighborhood as well as limiting more intense and potentially obtrusive uses. We hope you will support the zone change. Thank you for the continued efforts on behalf of Springfield. Sincerely, Kathy Brown, President." No, again, I apologize. I forgot those.
That's all right.
Phil?
Forgot about them too.
Who were those two from?
Hungry Hill Neighborhood and the East Springfield Neighborhood.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda under public hearings is site plan review. Eastside, address Eastside Markton Place, Eastside Zero Markton Place, 70 Markton Place and Eastside St. James Avenue. The site plan review, construction of a new indoor storage facility containing more than 30,000 square feet. Petitioner Brian K., also known as BK.
Is there someone here to speak on this issue?
Yes, hi. Good evening, planning board. My name is Casey Birch. I am a civil engineer for Soli Engineering. We have offices out of Boston, Massachusetts. And I'm here on behalf of the owner, Michael Frisbee, as well as the applicant, Brian K. for BK Realty, regarding the proposed self-storage facilities located at Markton Place and St. James Avenue. I can, if you don't mind, if I could share my screen, I kind of have a small presentation as well.
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay. Yeah, there you go. Let me know if you guys see it.
Yes.
All right. So the location, the property, the project site consists of four parcels located between St. James Avenue and Markton Place. It totals approximately 2.6 acres total. And access from the property is via a site drive off of St. James, approximately 450 feet south of the intersection of St. James Ave and Tapley Street. The project is bound by St. James Ave and commercial property to the west. Markton Place, which comes through here and through the back and in the south. It's bound by that by the north and east and some commercial and industrial properties to the south. As previously mentioned, it's four parcels. Three of the parcels currently are vacant and undeveloped. They used to be buildings, but they've been recently demolished, or not recently, but they've been demolished in the past. And a lot of the existing structures, such as the site drives and gravel drives, are still part of the property. The fourth lot is comprised of an industrial building, a single-story industrial building with site drives, utilities, fencing and gravel area for, I think, display area or something. I'm not sure what the gravel area is for, but moving on. What we're proposing is to eradicate the internal lines here and create two separate parcels. And we're doing that through the A&R Plan issued as part of this submission. So Lot 1 will consist of 2.0, that should be five acres, it's 4.6. And this one is 0.56 acres roughly. And the majority of the site work, which I'll be mentioning soon, will occur in the, well, all of it will occur in the 2.05 acre parcel that we're planning to create. The project proposes to construct two self-storage facilities, one three-level storage facility totaling approximately 72,000 square feet of gross floor area, and a smaller one-story building, approximately 10,425 square feet of gross floor area. The larger building is comprised of storage units as well as a 900-square-foot office space in the corner here. Access to the site will remain. We're modifying the end portion, but we're maintaining the majority of the pavement, which is in good condition right now from the St. James Avenue intersection. We are repaving the entire property as well as portions of Markton Place. Right now, Markton Place is a gravel, broken-up pavement area that's been kind of in disuse. So we're planning to pave everything and have access through a site drive in the middle of the building. Access to the actual storage facilities will occur through this gate here and a gate down here. And then we will exit all of our traffic out through a one-way site drive that's designed to pitch the majority of the traffic towards the main site drive. So no traffic, with a right out, with no right out over here with signage marking not to go through the existing convenience store gas station parcel to the north. We are providing 21 parking spaces, two ADA parking spaces just south of the smaller one-level building. And a dumpster pad area will be up in the southern corner, tucked away between in the back of these commercial buildings out of view from the St. James Avenue. And they will be enclosed with a board-on-board fence for customers, so the customers don't see any dumpster activity either. Talking about grades, the site grades from 212 to the northwest corner down to 209. This is a three-foot difference. To make up that difference, we are stepping the building approximately 0.5 difference. So, front of the building has elevation at 12... not much, but there will be one. Um, the, currently, the existing drainage all flows to, um, kind of north to south into the existing pipe, uh, drainage network within Marctown Place, and it's collected through a series of pipes and then, uh, diverted into the St. James Conveyance System, uh, to, uh, out in St. James. We are proposing to maintain similar, uh, drainage patterns. We'll capture with a series of, uh, catch basins pipes and then travel through to a, um, water quality unit, which, uh, uses swirl concentration to provide 85% total suspended solids removal, and then it will go into an infiltration basin, um, just south of the smaller building, uh, where it will attenuate all the storm flows up to the 100-year storm event, um, significantly improving the site from the existing condition, um, for stormwater-wise. We are making a few upgrades into Marctown Place. Uh, right now, there's two 15-inch pipes that, uh, we will be replacing with 18-inch pipes. We ran the numbers on the existing site, and this area just didn't, it surcharged in some storm events in the existing condition, uh, so we are making those upgrades to improve that, to improve that network. The, we're kind of doing roughly in, in two phases for the project. First phase is consisted, will consist of demolition of the building and a lot of the pavement within the site work area. Uh, we will provide a construction entrance and, uh, some silt fence in the back where the cemetery, um, property line is, as well as, uh, some sediment traps with some drainage rails to convey, uh, to the sediment traps, so no water will run off into adjacent properties, and these sediment traps are sized significantly. We also are providing inlet, uh, protection for all the existing catch basins, so no silt will enter the systems and, and go out into the main road. And then the second phase of the properties, it, obviously constructing the buildings and, and getting the pavement involved, uh, will remove construction entrance upon completion of pavement. We will maintain the silt sack, um, uh, in the protection and the silt fence and any other measure that until the final stabilization, stabilization of the property. And the planning plan, it's simple, but we are providing some under-story trees, or over-story trees, sorry, um, no, I was gonna say under-story trees, yeah, in the front where you can see, um, from St. James, and there'll be other trees behind these buildings just to, to break up the, uh, lawn area in this, in this, um, portion of the southwest corner. Uh, we will be covering the, even though it's a enclosure already, we, we're providing some, um, shrubs along the dumpster area to provide more protection from neighboring properties, and, um, we'll, we're kind of making this part like a focal point as you enter with, with some shrubs, um, on this front, uh, landscape bed right by the ADA accessible spaces. The lighting plan, the project will consist of two, two pole-mounted lights, um, about 15 feet in height in the area of the entrance drive here and the exit drive here. The rest of the site will be illuminated via wall packs along the building facade. So it'll, it'll stay, uh, pretty, uh, lit throughout, and the, the main focus of the exit and the entrance will be brighter than the rest. Um, let's just switch over to this plan, that, actually, there. So this is the, the elevation to the larger building, uh, it is a metal, um, panel building. You, as you can see here, these are the, uh, the overhead doors at the base, at the front and back of the, the entrance, uh, of the building, and these are just storage units, they're not, they're not garage doors, um, they're just the overhead storage bins that you typically see, um, yeah, you know, in those, in those famous, uh, shows that, uh, people sell their stuff off of, and, but, yeah, it's just, it's, they're not for, they're not for, uh, garage doors. I, I only mention this because there was questions, Phil had questions about that in a call we had, and I just want to clarify, that this isn't used for, uh, parking of vehicles. Um, and he, um, the first floor has the office space in, um, this building is approximately 32 feet in height. This is the west elevation of the larger building, and this is the smaller, single-story building, as you can see, the west elevation and east elevation have the similar, um, uh, storage overhead doors, entrance in the front, and there's only one, there's no entrance on the sides, and that's, this is about, I believe, it's about nine feet in height, so, could shallow. And that was kind of just my spiel. If you guys had any direct questions, uh, I would love to answer them, and I also have, uh, BK Realty on the phone, he'll be able to answer any direct questions for architectural. Um, if you have any civil site, I will definitely be able to answer those.
Do board members have any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have one question. How many, uh, how many units total?
Brian, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you know that off the top of your head?
I do, give me one moment, I believe it's just over six, look, am I, can you hear me?
Cut out.
Yep, am I okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let me just, um, get out of this and pull up my numbers, I think it's just over 600 units, but let me, I'll pull it up right now to give you where our current Let's see, I have 658 units total.
I have a couple of questions, well, I actually have three, but two for you. Is it going to be 24/7 available, and is there going to be somebody on site like Monday through Friday or Monday, during the day, Monday through Saturday or something?
Uh, so it is going to be 24-hour accessible, we will have the office open, um, it'll be every day of the week, probably full, uh, full-time, uh, the hours aren't really, I'm not really set on the hours yet, but it's probably going to be late morning through early evening, Monday through Saturday, and then a half-day on Sunday.
Okay, so there'll be somebody there during a typical workday or around that, all right.
Yeah.
Um, Phil, this question's for you.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's for everybody, I'm not sure. I remember when this came up for us a few years ago, when they were looking to do the registry, and I know there was all kinds of issues with ownership, um, has that all been resolved? I don't remember the specifics.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there was, there was issues over the old Marctown Place, but, but that development had more to do with, with the, the buildings actually extending into the old Marctown Place and the use of Marctown, the old Marctown Place for parking as part of the overall development, so that's really kind of where the issues arose.
Okay.
That development, um, this is, um, you know, it's going to resolve some of the issues with the, with the, you know, the quote-unquote "new" Marctown Place that comes under, off of St. James Avenue, again, as part of the development for the gas station a few years back that was supposed to become a new public way, that never happened, so there was...
Right, I remember it didn't happen, yes.
I mean, there was, so there was a bunch of ambiguity about, you know, whether it's public or private, this'll, this'll end that discussion, and this is, this is technically, although it looks like a city street, will be technically the, the driveway into this development, as well as, I, I believe, still being able to access, um, as it does today over to the gas station or the Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, one of the big concerns with the, with the, with the proposed RMV was obviously traffic. Um, there was, there was a significant concern about, um, people going to the RMV and using it by the gas station out to Tapley Street, um, and both for exiting the site and entering the site, so there was, there was a, DPW had a number of concerns regarding the amount of traffic that were going to be using that exit and entrance, um, so that was, that was one of the real sticking points to that development, obviously, I, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I can refer to Luca, but the, the traffic for this development is, is significantly less than that, so, uh, you know, DPW does not have the same concerns that they had with the proposed RMV.
Yeah, I also, I also remember, oh, yeah, Luca?
I agree with Phil, obviously, the amount of, the amount of traffic is a lot less than an RMV would, would have, but also, I would like to mention that the peak flows of traffic that a storage facility have are not going to, uh, conflict with your standard workday, uh, peak flow traffics, which are typically between 7:00 and 9:00, and, uh, 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, and, I mean, people are going to the, the storage facilities on, after work, on the weekends, and, and things of that nature.
Phil, I also remember there was a lawsuit at that time, I don't know.
There is. I'm still, I'm still part of that, so I'm waiting, there, there's, there's still, I, I, there, there still is an active lawsuit.
There is, okay. I think that was the first time I was sued, so it sort of stayed in my mind.
Yeah.
I have a question, what is the outside of the building? You may have said that, and I, I could have zoned out, so I apologize.
Yeah, it's comprised of the metal panels.
Okay.
The horizontal ADP 26GA, I don't, I don't know if that means anything to anybody, but it's, it's that rigid metal panel look.
And what color?
Uh, Brian? We still haven't settled on a color yet, you know, um, uh, we're still up in debate on that, but I'm, I'm shooting for like a dark, uh, natural, like wood, brown or green, something in that natural tone.
Okay. I just want something that was going to be glaringly stood out in that area.
Well, I was, I was thinking neon pink, but somebody else, somebody else said no, so.
Bright orange, you know?
Bright orange, perfect, perfect.
Brian, if you could, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm Brian K., uh, so I own BK Realty, our, our office is on Sumner Avenue, Springfield, I live, um, at 475 Parker Street in East Long Meadow.
And my other question is, what happens, what is happening to the other parcel of land?
Uh, so, the goal is down the road to develop that into, um, hopefully a retail, a separate retail place. Uh, we have some, we have some rough drawings on a building up on St. James, we're parking in the back, uh, but my, you know, I'm, I'm in this, uh, I'm concerned about the storage building, so we're doing this first, and then we'll, you know, we're parcelling, I've had somebody offer to buy that, to put a retail in there, um, so it's, we're looking at doing something in detail or in...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jeff? Just a question, I mean, seems like storage units are popping up everywhere, and this is 600 plus, you, is there that great a demand for storage?
So, believe it or not, there is, um, I did a feasibility study, one thing that, um, you failed to mention is that the larger building is going to be climate-controlled, um, uh, which is, there's not much of that around, there's very little in the area, climate control, so basically meaning that as opposed to a cold storage building where you're keeping your stuff there, you know, and if it's 20 degrees outside, it's 20 inside, this will stay between, I think it's 58 and 74 degrees at all times, all year. Um, uh, so, in my feasibility study, believe it or not, I know it seems like there's a lot on there, and I, uh, a lot out there, uh, based on the demographics, there's, there's still demand for around, um, 300,000 square feet of climate-controlled space and about 100,000 square feet of non-climate-controlled, and I'm only taking about 65,000 square feet net rentable of that, so, and all the other, all the other, um, facilities around are running at 98 to 100% occupancy. Since COVID, they've all been at 99 to 100, they normally run between 90 and 93, so it's, it's high demand still, believe it or not.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Is that the McKnight Neighborhood?
Yes, I did, I did provide them with the, with the, I, I did notify the, uh, McKnight Neighborhood Council, I sent them plans, and I also, uh, sent Brian the information to contact them as well.
Have you heard anything?
I haven't had it connect yet, but I'm planning on talking to them as well.
It would be great if we could hear something before the next meeting.
Yep, I, my goal is to reach out to them this week.
Anyone else? Okay, I will, if there are no other questions or concerns, I will accept a motion to continue the hearing.
Motion to continue the hearing.
Can you just stop your screen sharing?
Do you second it?
Yeah, I, I second.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. All right, Phil, if you would do roll call.
Okay, on, on the motion to continue site plan review for Marctown Place, uh, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yeah, did you buy one of these shirts?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was approved.
All right.
Yeah, picked it up.
I need somebody.
Did you get next up?
I'm gonna mute these guys, so, okay, so, um, um, I, I do not have any A&R plans tonight, so, um, just, uh, you know, the next meeting is October 7th, we will need to hear these, so, the folks who are here could plan to be on the 7th, that would be great, but other than that, I, I currently have no business.
Okay, Phil, I'll reach out to Forest Park and ask for a little bit more detail, if that's all right with you.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, uh, Victor Davia did call me this morning, I should have asked him, but I didn't, so I, if you don't get a hold of him, let me know, and I can, I can contact him as well.
Okay, thank you. Are we sticking to the 5:30 time now?
Yeah, I mean, if that works, again, I was trying to keep it a little earlier, but also give Rico a little more time, I think Rico didn't come today because he had a dentist appointment, so I was trying to get it, if, if it works better for everybody to move back to 6, then we can do that as well.
I think Rico's used the dentist appointment a little too frequently.
Be doctor next.
He'll have the most beautiful teeth. No, 5, 5 or 5:30 is fine with me, 5:30 is fine.
Okay.
5, 5:30 is okay.
Whatever works best.
All right, well, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Folks, see you in a week.
Thank you.